We call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Thursday, July 7, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber as well as via Zoom teleconference. Prayer will be offered tonight by interim Deputy City Clerk Tara King, and Alderman Govea will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
The Court should allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I call for the roll call attendance, I just want to announce that, as all of you know, that Alderman Cathy has resigned his position as Ward Seven Alderman for personal reasons, and we will be looking for someone to replace him in Ward Seven. So I just wanted to put that out there. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please indicate if you're participating via Zoom and state why you cannot meet in person and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Cleed?
Here.
Alder Morin? Alderman Morin? Alderman Locas?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Clemens?
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Como?
Present.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Govea?
Here.
Alderman Tebow?
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Here.
And Alderman Wilshire?
And I'm here.
All right, 13 physically in attendance, zero participating via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton, and John Griffin, CFO. I will turn this meeting over tonight to the Chairman of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tonight we're going to have public hearings on R 22041 relative to supplemental appropriation of $500,000 of FY 2022 assigned fund balance into Fund 7025, City Retirement Trust Fund, and R 22044 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $1,500,000 of FY 2022 assigned fund balance into Department 126, Financial Services Account 68500, Abatements. We are going to start with the first public hearing on R 22041. Is there someone here that would like to come up and explain?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I mean, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Aldermen. This particular resolution is not uncommon. As we've learned over the last several years, sometimes $500,000 that's put into the Retirement Trust Fund is not enough, and this is the case. We've had about $1.3 million of what we call final payments for sick and vacation time to several of our employees who have retired. The $500,000 didn't go enough, as we said, but what happens transactionally is when the individual retires from a department such as police, fire, DPW, et cetera, the wages are charged, the final payout's charged to that department or division. Then, upon notification to the accounting department, the money's equaling that final payout, it transferred to the department to more or less make them whole. Some departments can actually absorb the retirement by maybe not filling a position or doing other things, having other surpluses in wages. But some just need to have that transfer to true things up. You've recently passed a supplemental appropriation to move monies from similar account to the Fire Department. So that was to kind of shore up their wages that were paid out due to some pandemic issues and some shift coverage. In this case, they had a fair amount of retirements that you know of where the final payments need to be covered in this regard. So most of this $500,000 is going to be transferred to the Fire Department. Happy to report that the Police Department does not have a fair amount of retirements as well. They're going to be able to cover their retirements within their budget. And as you've learned probably through the budget process and other communications, they've had a fair amount of a loss in functional employment. Not sure what the latest number is, but unlike the Fire Department, where you have mandatory shift coverage, the Police Department has a little bit more leeway in doing other things. So I'm happy to report that we don't need $800,000 as an addition. $500,000 will be able to get us the funds to the Fire Department as well as cover any other areas that need the funds to balance. There could be smaller departments that had a departure that can't handle that particular final payout. So we'll be analyzing that over the next few weeks as we close the books. The monies that you're transferring into this particular trust do not lapse. So to the extent there's monies left from, after all the transfers are done, there should be some monies left to carry us over into Fiscal 23, where just last week you appropriated a half a million dollars into this particular trust fund. So that's kind of the explanation for the need. The Controller and I, working with the mayor, we decided to use this source of funds, which is the assigned fund balance for future liabilities, because that's the purpose of the assigned fund balance for future liabilities that was created several years ago to cover things like excess pension costs, excess medical costs. And in this case, it's a perfect fit for our requirements to pay our employees that are retiring, so it makes sense. And that's why we chose this. We're too early in the game to identify other areas that we could have taken. Plus, we want to plan the whole escrow process, the amount of money we put against the tax rate, things like that. So this will give us a good step to fully fund these particular amounts that have already been paid. We just need to make sure we get the monies into these specific departments that need the funds. Thank you.
Any of the Aldemans have clarifying questions for Mr. Griffin? Alderman Clemens?
Thank you. So one of your last comments there was that you stated that it's too early to tell yet whether or not you could have taken this from other places. Does that mean that there's a possibility there that some of the money here that we're transferring could potentially go back to that fund?
Mr. Chairman, yes. How the process works upon closing of the books is we take surplus in revenue or estimates. Appropriation is not spent. We get this large number that's called unassigned fund balance. And then we do just what you suggested. If we have the ability to take some of the funds, put it back to assigned fund balance, that's what we'll do. This will just help us get a jumpstart and make sure we can pay everything with the next. We've already paid the money. We true up the accounts properly before we even begin the close.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned most of this money is going to go to the Fire Department. $500,000 is a real round number. Do you have an exact number as far as what's needed to cover that and how much will be carried over? I know it doesn't lapse, but do you have an idea of how much is going to be used?
Subject to check, I believe it's $350,000. So the sum of the final payment retirements is in the $350,000 range. That will leave us about $150,000 to true up some of the other departments, the smaller ones that may not be able to cover. And finally, as you indicated, it will continue on to give us a head start into next year.
Any other clarifying questions? Alderman O'Brien?
Mr. Griffin, as you know, I worked with you and we worked on that bill up at the State House and everything with the retirement. So it is anticipation that we are going to receive somewhere, maybe around $2 million, give or take a penny or two on either north or south. But that is expected with the New Hampshire retirement system by what? It should have been every single year, but unfortunately, our friends up there did not see fit to make it every single year and gave us only a one-time benefit. So this would make this $500,000 basically somewhat of a wash, you know? Because we will be recuperating anticipatory funding from the state, hopefully very soon. Granted, it may not come as a check to the city. It may be lower payments or something like that to the New Hampshire retirement system, but it will get the benefit from that.
Right, maybe I can speak, Mr. Chairman, on that? So I want to make sure that we're understanding what's happening. These are the final payments to our employees for services, and they're funded at the local level. What Alderman O'Brien is talking about, and I sent some communication out last week, best information I had was that the retirement system, the employer cost to us for each and every hour of a dollar spent going towards retirement, that is a 7.5% refund, if you will, to us for monies that we've spent on retirement costs, the New Hampshire retirement system costs, that we put in the New Hampshire retirement system. It makes perfect sense to me. I had guessed maybe that New Hampshire retirement system would want to take control of this and reduce the employer rates by 7.5%, but I probably should have thought a little bit more deeply. They don't want to have anything affect their employer rates. So the latest intelligence I have is that once all the numbers are in bona fide, be paid to the New Hampshire retirement system, they will communicate to the state, who will cut a check to the city for the exact amount that we contributed to equal the 7.5%. There was some talk, I think, like the, either the school district in Manchester, I think they were doing something with their revenues. But in this case, it seems pretty clear that they're going to pay us retroactively after we pay the New Hampshire retirement system. That will come in either as unanticipated revenue, because the state won't know what the number is ahead of time, or unanticipated revenue that we can use to help the city in some way, shape, or form. But it wouldn't be offsetting, the long and the short of it, it wouldn't be offsetting these particular costs. But it's certainly going to help the city to get 7.5% of the employer costs for police, fire, and teachers.
Any other clarifying questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I'm now going to open up testimony in favor. There is no one, I don't believe in the audience, that wants to... And is there anyone online that wants to speak in favor? Seeing no one? I'll move on to testimony in opposition. Again, there is no one in the audience. Is there anyone online which is to speak in opposition? R 22041. Seeing no one, move on. Once again, the testimony in favor. No one still in the audience? Anyone online? Seeing no one, move on to testimony in opposition. Seeing no one? I will close the public hearing on Resolution R 22041 at 7:14 PM. I'll now open the public hearing on R 22044 at 7:14 PM. This is relative to the supplemental appropriation of $1,500,000 of FY 2022 assigned fund balance into Department 126, Financial Services Account 68500, Abatements. Who is it? Mayor, are you going to cover this?
Yes, I will begin with this, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. So here we're dealing with the, basically, the overlay account. Now, what the overlay account is, is the account from which the city settles abatement requests when, or abatement litigation, abatement claims, when taxpayers say that their property is too assessed too much. City disagrees, but there's ultimately negotiation, sometimes litigation, experts on both sides when commercial property is involved, and ultimately, a resolution either through settlement or by decision of the Board of Land and Tax Appeals or the Superior Court. Now, going into, and each year we establish an overlay amount that goes into the overlay account. Coming into Fiscal 22, we knew that this would be a challenging year for abatements. We, for, I think, three principal reasons. Two related to COVID. First of all, in the more recent tax years, we have seen claims by commercial property owners, the big ones, malls, Mall of New Hampshire, excuse me, the Fesen Lane Mall and others, claim that their property was reduced in value as a result of the loss of business caused by the COVID pandemic. And they have filed, and we anticipated that we would be dealing with some of those abatement requests. Number two, COVID resulted in the delay of hearings on previously filed abatement petitions. For really, there were very few hearings for a period of nearly two years, and that was at the Board of Land and Tax Appeals and at the Superior Court. So many abatements that had been filed in previous years were simply held over. Typically, you, cases tend to settle around the hearing date because both sides realize, well, you know, it's right upon us and the case could go against us. So that is when there's the most settlement negotiation and when most cases settle. So as a result of the COVID delays, a lot of abatement cases just remain pending. And third, there were ongoing negotiations regarding two big issues. Those were the pilot agreements, the payment in lieu of tax agreements with Southern New Hampshire Medical Center and Dartmouth Hitchcock. Now, Attorney Bolton can give you the exact numbers, but the abatement, the previous pilots ran out, I think, in 19 and 18, and therefore, those needed to be renegotiated. But we were committed to receiving more money on the pilot agreements than we'd been paid in the past. Now, the way a pilot agreement works is that the two, these two medical centers, which are nonprofit entities, claim that as nonprofits, they don't have to pay any taxes. And there's some, again, Attorney Bolton can fill you in, but there's some significant suggestions in the case law that maybe they're right. On the other hand, we contend that, you know, there are medical practices and doctors that are making significant money, and therefore, these entities are at least partially taxable. Negotiations went on for quite a while, and ultimately, we resolved those cases at significantly more in terms of payment in lieu in taxes than we were getting previously. But certainly, but because the properties were assessed at full value by the assessors, the settlement at less than 100% of taxes meant that there needed to be a refund because they had been, I think in one case, they'd been actually paying the taxes, and in the other, we, there were some outstanding issues. So those are the three big reasons. So going into the year, we allocated quite a bit of money into overlay, and we had the overlay number, which you see on your accounting, that prepared by CFO Griffin. And we knew also that we had a $1,500,000 contingency account carried over from previous years outside the overlay account, but still reserved as part of the assigned fund balance, but reserved for an overlay for abatement issues. And in the end, we were pretty conservative. I mean, we didn't want to overtax. And we thought the overlay amount might be enough, but we knew that we had the reserve behind it. And in the end, we needed the overlay amount plus about $1 million. So we are now asking that the $1,005,000 that was reserved for abatements be appropriated and transferred into a line that will enable us to resolve all of these abatements using the overlay account and the contingency or the fund that was reserved for overlay as well. And this will leave us with $436,000 in the overlay account, and we will need to allocate, again, this fall, money into the overlay account for future abatement requests. Now, Mr. Griffin may have additional details. Maybe I've covered it all. I don't know. Is there anything else you would like to add? Certainly, he's available for questions.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector. The mayor did an outstanding job explaining what's happening. Just to provide a little bit more detail, we've been planning for this for several years. And for example, in, there was some overlay available in '21, '20, '21, '22. There was slightly more than $1 million in '20, about $3.4 million in '21. '22, we put $2 million in. So when the mayor issued his report on overlay and surplus last year, we felt pretty comfortable with the $6.6 billion of overlay. But as the mayor indicated, a lot of settlements from prior years came to us, and we paid the money out. The two bills to Southern Medical, Southern New Hampshire Medical and Dartmouth Hitchcock were about $3.8 million. So half of this, or more than half of it, was because of that, those transactions. The good news on those transactions, and Attorney Bolton can explain further, is we're going to get over several years more money than we had gotten previously. In addition to that, we have about $1.8 million of what we consider unanticipated revenue in the line item that calls for pilot revenue. So this is kind of the liquidation of the receivable side, but on the revenue side, we're able to book as unanticipated revenue about $1.8 million for those two entities. I just wanted to share that with you, that it's not all paying out. This is a great, great deal of money coming in due to the efforts of Attorney Bolton and his team. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions for the mayor? Mr. Griffin, Alderman Cleed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at, last year we had a $6.8 million as we started the fund. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. We're going to end with $436,000 as of June 30. I know that we had some extraordinary, these two items of $3.8 million. But what should the balance, I mean, what is a good, healthy balance for the overlay fund to start a year?
So the good news after this is taken care of is we do have time to answer that very question. As I indicated, the mayor, honor before September 1 of every year, talks to surplus and also... He talks to the surplus and the amount to put into the overlay. As you all know, we're going through a revaluation process. As you all know, there are some ongoing cases that are to be determined. So we have to study those pretty intently and figure out how much money we should put into the overlay during the tax rate setting process. So the 432, 436 is ready for any settlements or any abatements to come in from now going forward. Because we're now in a fiscal year, we're going to be able to settle appropriately where we should, and we will use all that information to properly establish the overlay for this particular year. So it's unknown at this point, but you will know with certainty when the mayor issues his report that I just spoke of on surplus and overlay.
Thank you.
All set? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions, please. If you could please explain just the definition of overlay encumbrances, and then I also see overlay expenses. Could you please explain what some of those expenses might be?
Certainly. The overlay expenses are the expenses incurred by the city to engage expert consultants to defend the city's position and value. The line below it, an encumbrance is a purchase order, if you will, an engagement purchase order for those same qualified experts to help us. So that's the amount that hasn't been spent. So the purchase order, what it does is encumbers the funds until it's either used or it's called liquidated. It's eliminated if no longer necessary.
All set? Alderman Sullivan?
If I may, please.
Yes, follow him?
So the, so the encumbrance is a purchase order placed, sent to a consultant. So is that 97834 part of the 147677?
I'd look at it, a good question. I'd look at it, if you add the two together, they total the purchase orders, and $97,000 has been paid to the vendor for the services rendered.
Oh, I, okay.
The 147 is hanging, what they call hanging out there for allowing the vendor to continue doing their work, and then they will invoice us to be paid.
Understood. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other clarifying questions? Yes, Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that one of the challenges involved in this was the gap due to COVID with cases not being heard and things like that. So in those previous years, in '20 and '21, were we not allocating funds into this because there were no cases, or were we allocating less?
Well, we were accumulating money, I think you could say. I mean, we allocated $2 million into that, but we, last year, for example. But we had a balance of, I believe the number, we had $4.8 million in the account when we allocated $2 million, right? So, you know, if those cases had been settled earlier, that balance would have been lower.
Okay, thank you.
All set? Any other questions?
I mean, there's, John, Mr. Griffin mentioned one thing. There is revenue coming in on the other side of this that because in the pilot situations, at least one of the institutions did not pay taxes. So when we reached the pilot agreement, they had to retroactively pay three or four years. So that's a revenue number that does not appear here because as an accounting matter, that is revenue, revenue coming to the city not being, not allocated specifically for accounting reasons, I guess, to the overlay account. But there is some revenue. I think you said $1.6, $1.8 million offsetting some of this liability.
Additional clarifying questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mayor? I will now open up testimony in favor of R 20044. Is there anyone that would wish to speak in favor? Seeing no one in the chamber, no one online? Testimony in opposition? Seeing no one in the chamber, no one online? There will be none. Testimony in favor, once? Testimony in favor once more? No one in the chamber, no one online? And once again, testimony in opposition? No one in the chamber, no one online? There would be none. I will now close the public hearing on Resolution R 22044 at 7:30 PM. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that the July 7, 2022, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
The motion is to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at 7:30.